We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, November the 17th, 2025. We'll have our invocation by the Reverend Barry, excuse me, Brian Barry Hill of Heritage Baptist Church. I apologize, Pastor. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight, thankful, Lord, for another opportunity to call on your name. And, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to open up this meeting. We ask you, Lord, as we go into this Thanksgiving season, Lord, be with all those in our community and around this land. Lord, I pray you'd meet every need, be with those that do not have, and, Lord, I just pray you'd bless them this holiday season. Lord, I ask you, Lord, at this time, to be with us going through this meeting. Lord, you know the agenda, you know each and everything that's on the docket tonight, and I just pray that you'd be in the midst of it all. And, Lord, you'd lead God in direct, keep us safe, and, Lord, we'll just thank and praise you for all you do. In Jesus' name, we humbly pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Barry Hill, we appreciate the invocation and the prayers for the meeting this evening. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting for tonight. This is a city council regular meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed last Thursday at our Legislative Work Session. If the business here, therefore, is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol items, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you receive a warning, you will receive a warning from the Chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, clap, or carry on conversations in the audience or to the audience when you're at the podium. When you come to the podium, please address all of your comments and concerns to myself and council members. We're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings. We will not, we are not required to accept public comments on other items before this council outside of the public hearings. When you come to the portion, comments from citizens and delegates, we ask that you, if you had a public hearing, that you would make those comments then and not rehash the comments after. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you please put those on silent mode or power those off until after the meeting so they would not be disruptive. I'll go over the agenda items and how they will be handled by committees, and then we'll get into the meat of our meeting. The committee chairperson will read his or her agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make a determination before we vote. After that, we'll take the vote. And then, because these items were discussed on Thursday night during our Legislative Work Session, we will not take questions or comments regarding each item during this meeting unless it's new information. Tonight is a voting meeting, and we either move to approve, deny, or take no action this evening. Prior to approaching the podium, if you'd like to speak to us, there are speaker cards outside, and they're in that little form. They're white cards at the bottom of that stack of three cards. You should fill your name and address out and all that information. And if you don't mind, if you want to talk to us, please come forward and hand your speaker card to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Callen, and she will give it to our city clerk, Ms. Vicky Acker, to put into the official record. When you're at the podium, give us your name and address, and then you can proceed with talking to us, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the city. This is not a question-and-answer format. This meeting is not a debate format. We're here to receive the information and try to deliberate and get the information for you. If we need to respond back, staff will respond back to you at another time. Any printed materials, please give it to our city clerk. I believe that's everything. If you have any questions or comments, you certainly can bring those forward at the time when you come forward to talk to us. If not, we'll move on. If you'd like to have a printed agenda, they're outside. If not, you can follow us on the screen behind me. So now we'll move on with the agenda as presented this evening, and we've done the Pledge Allegiance. Now we have an announcement. It's a presentation of the Fall 2025 Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy Class, and our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson, will come forward and give us that information as Item 25-438.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. It is my honor to present to you this evening the Fall 2025 Graduating Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy Class. As you all know, Dose of Douglasville is a 10-week program to familiarize residents of the city with the structure of city government and services provided. The academy provides residents with information, resources, and tools to become knowledgeable community members and leaders. This class this fall consisted of 15 participants for the Fall Program, all of which were city residents minus two city employees. This graduating class will add 15 more individuals to the alumni of the academy, now totaling almost 200 individuals. Throughout their time, these participants have met with city staff, participated in several activities throughout the past few months. As you know, they experienced things like creating their own city budget and presenting a balanced budget to mayor and city council. The 15 individuals this year were very, very lively, and they were a dedicated group of residents. One of the things that they thoroughly enjoy is that they had a chance to be the city's VIPs to the New Recycling Center. So they were the first individuals to go to the recycling center. I gave them paper bags, some came, like four paper bags, of recycling items, but they were able to have a fun, informative, and very hands-on session with our Public Services Department and just to learn firsthand about recycling and overall operations of the New Recycling Center. So that was one thing we did add, and we do love that these individuals give their time every Tuesday, two hours each, for free. I just feed them a little dinner, and so that was the one thing this year that was special, that we were able to offer them to be first-class VIP citizens into the New Recycling Center, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. It has been a pleasure to get to know these 15 individuals over the last 10 weeks, and they are truly dedicated residents. Next, I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Patrice Holt, one of the graduates who will share their experience. And Ms. Holt is also, as I said, a city of Douglasville resident.
Let's give her a hand when she comes. She's being brave.
Patrice Holt, 6539 Bluffview Drive, Douglasville, Georgia. That's over in Ward 3.
Good evening, everybody. Over the last 10 weeks, you just heard Chelsea tell us that we had the opportunity to engage in a Dose of Douglasville, the Citizens Academy. And as Pastor said, this is a season for us to be grateful. When I was reflecting on how I was feeling about it, I couldn't come up with another word, and that's what I wrote down. Grateful for the experience, definitely grateful for the people and the community that brought us together. When I first signed up for the academy, I expected to learn more about the city and how it worked. I'm nosy a little bit, right? What I didn't expect was just how meaningful this experience was going to be, how much I'm going to be, I was going to be inspired by the people that I went through this learning experience with. Over these last few weeks, we haven't just sat down in a room and just received the information. We've really stepped behind the scenes of what's happening in our city. We asked real questions, a lot of them. We met the people who really make this city function every day, and we saw firsthand the passion that goes into serving Douglasville. From the highly skilled professionals that work in our sanitation department, I have so much more respect for them, to the creatives that are working in marketing and communications, and the folks that are working in parks and rec that's keeping us active and entertained. My neighbors and I really learned that Douglasville is employing the best and the brightest. I really want to offer a sincere thank you to Chelsea, though. She's been our host, she's been our facilitator, she's been our learning advocate, and you really guided us with a lot of patience, made sure that we had clarity, and you have been so genuinely enthusiastic for us to learn more. You've made every session really engaging. You created a space where we were welcomed to learn openly. We could ask anything. We not only asked everything, we asked anything, too. And you truly, led by your leadership and your commitment to transparency, set the tone for our entire academy. To my fellow participants, I'll never forget this experience. We had a wonderful time learning alongside each other. Each week, I look forward to hearing everybody's perspectives, depending on what side of town they lived on. We laughed together. We discovered new parts of the city through zoning that we weren't quite sure were there and what was happening. That really made us feel like we were in the know. And I know that my neighbors showed up because they care and love Douglasville, just like I do. So thank you to my neighbors for your curiosity, your engagement, and your camaraderie. Had a special person who participated with me, my husband, so I can't say enough about that. Thank you for being my partner in everything, and this adventure, too, every Tuesday. I hope that we all leave here with a deeper appreciation for this community, a stronger commitment to being active and informed citizens. Our experience in the academy may be over, but I've told all 100 of my neighbors that they should sign up, so be ready for that, those applications for next semester, Chelsea. But I really hope that the knowledge that we've gained, the relationships, and the pride in our city really stays with us. Thank you so much for giving me a little time.
Thank you so much, Patrice. And see, that's why I always love to hear about their perspective, because those are the individuals that gave their free time to be with not only me, but the 14 other individuals, as well as, I didn't tell this part, but during our Police Department, that's like one of the favorite ones, public safety, they stayed until a little after 9:00 because they wanted a full experience. So they want to do a full tour of the public safety complex, and I told some of them, I said, "You all can go home, you know, you've already been for two hours," and the majority of them said, "We're going to go take a tour." And so that session ended a little after 9:00, but it's just their dedication of wanting to learn about every department and want to be fully all into it. So thank you again, Patrice. With that being said, Mayor and Council, I would like to introduce you to the Fall 2025 Class, Dose of Douglasville. To my, I believe, Ms. Hampton and Ms. Tate, they will be to my left or my right. I'm going to let them, give them a couple of moments to get in place, but I do have 15 individuals. Some of the individuals I stated are not able to be here with us, but just going back to the dedication, some of those individuals actually sent people in their place to get their certificate because they really, really still want to be present. So with that being said, to my right, you have Ms. Hampton, our city manager, and Ms. Kristen Tate, Operations Manager, and they will fill out, they will give the certificates to the individuals as I call their name. The first individual is Sharina Adrade. She is unfortunately unable to be here with us. She's on vacation, but she has her very great friend, Ms. Natoya Lostlin, who came in her place to accept her certificate. Next, we have Ms. Latoya Boston. She's my troublemaker. Every class, she sat beside me, asking me all the questions. Next, we have Erin Hope. And I will go ahead and call up Ms. Patrice Holt, who you all just heard from. Jennifer Johns, which you all know as a city of Douglasville employee. Mr. Jason Martin. He's unable to be here with us today. We have Ms. Mia McDonald, who is also a city employee, and I believe Ms. Emily Hardaway will be taking that certificate. We're back to her. We have Ms. Felicia Mohammed. Ms. Jasmine Petty. Dr. Tamika Scott.
School Board member.
Member of the school board, yes, ma'am.
So she had enough meetings to go to.
She's had a lot of meetings and still stayed for three hours with me. We have Ms. Sharon Diane Turner, and she's unable to be with us, but that is Breezy's mom. That's one thing that we said throughout. Breezy Straighton, who's the VP of our Elevate Douglas, her mom actually went through the Citizens Academy, so that was one thing, but she's unable to be here but Breezy's mom, as we called her a lot during Citizens Academy. And last, certainly not least, Ms. Kenya Williams. Thank you all, and congratulations, Mayor and City Council Members. The individuals of the Fall 2025 Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy Class have completed all requirements needed, all activities and sessions. It's been very, very great to have those individuals and just to share the last two and a half months with them, and I continue, well, I wish them continued success as they navigate through their communities and through their neighborhood and be very proactive citizens. Congratulations to them all, and as a reminder, there will be a reception at the Alice Hawthorne Center immediately following council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. We must give Ms. Jackson and all of the participants of Dose of Douglasville.
Mayor and City Council, would you all like a group picture with them?
Sure.
If I can have all Fall 2025 Citizens Academy graduates to the front, please, for a quick
Alrighty. So that was wonderful. We've just heard the presentation, and having heard that, I will make a motion to approve Item 25-438. May I have a second, please? Thank you, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 25-438 is approved, which is the Dose of Douglasville Citizens Academy Class. Now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I will open the floor for a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for November 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve Item 25-409. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda item is adopted. Item 25-409 is unanimously approved. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of the October 30th, 2025 Legislative Work Session and Minnesota November 3rd, 2025 Committees, Regular Meeting, and Executive Session. That is Item 25-410. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve Item 25-410. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Item 25-410 is unanimously approved. Now we'll go to the Consent Agenda, which is Item Number 7. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We're on a roll. It's been properly moved in second, moved by Councilman Estes and second by Mayor Pro Tem, to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns, any issues with the Consent Agenda?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight, under public safety, there's the item about increasing alcohol from 11:00 a.m. until 11:30, but in the tributary, it was already approved under Consent Agenda?
The items regarding the Entertainment District on the Consent Agenda are adoption of Entertainment District maps only. They don't have any change to the alcohol ordinance itself.
But it was approved for the tributary?
Yes, and to amend the Ward 2 Downtown Entertainment District as well.
So it's already been voted on for downtown and the tributary?
That's being voted on for the Consent Agenda, yes. And then the actual proposed amendment to the alcohol ordinance to allow for open containers during 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. is going to be voted on outside of the Consent Agenda. Just the maps are being voted on in the Consent Agenda.
Right, so it's just the maps?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. So they're making the Consent Agenda, I mean, tributary because of Twisted Pie and all the development there to put them as part as Entertainment District. So the map is being voted on at Consent, and then we'll go and take everything to see if it's going to be from 11:00 to 11:30. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions? I know it's a lot of agenda items, so we need to have clarity. Any other concerns? If not, all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Consent Agenda is approved unanimously. So we'll move on, then. We're at Item Number 8, which is Economic Development Committee, that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Item Number 10, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. We'll move on then to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll go back to you, Councilman Estes. Personnel and Organization Committee.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. The Personnel and Organization Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Development Committees and Public Improvement and Beautification Committees are both chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for planning and development or public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business, I just have.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I was not here on Thursday, so Coach Watts was and had a lot of the comments, so I've spoken with him. If he'll go ahead and take the chair and make comments that's needed.
Okay, so Vice Chair, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under public safety. That's Item A, to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 10-2C5 of the city's Code of Ordinances to update the open container rules within the city's entertainment district. And Ms. Chelsea Jackson will handle this tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilwoman Watts. On Thursday, you all discussed, and I brought before you all a recommendation, well, actually, it was brought to staff to do research and to update the open container permitting process. So the current process is an individual organization must complete an open container permit and submit to the city of Douglasville's Economic Development Department or Division. The permit is then reviewed by staff and submitted to be approved or denied by Mayor and City Council. Mayor and City Council reviews it at a city council meeting and agrees to approve or deny the permit for the open container day. The applicant is notified, and then the staff notifies the businesses within the Entertainment District of the upcoming open container day. After research, staff proposes elimination of the overall application process and for the Entertainment District to be enacted without a permit from 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. daily. So that's the only update with, as you see, attached to the ordinance would be to remove the permitting process. Currently, you all do have an open container or Entertainment District area between the hours, but of 11:00 a.m. and 11:30 p.m., it just now has, it needs a application or permit in order to be established. So this will remove the application process, but nothing else within the ordinance.
So to have, under the current, they would still have to have a, they would or would not have to?
Under the current one, they have to have a permit and an application. If Mayor and Council votes to approve or adopt this ordinance, it will remove the application and permitting process.
I see. All right. I'd love to hear from Council on this. I know we talked about it the other night. I specifically asked for this to be on the agenda and not Consent Agenda so we could talk a little bit more about it. So anybody, yes, Madam Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Deputy City Manager, Ms. Jackson. I did ask from the Police Department last week, Chief, of our Deputy Chief, since the Entertainment District, now they don't have to go for permits, and they're considered that they already have the privilege to have open containers in the Entertainment District. If there is an infraction, could they, we be made aware of that and them not have that privilege? If there's, you know, one of the restaurants that there's a concern, I don't know if they violated something or there's a fight or whatever, if there's an issue, could that be brought to our attention?
Yeah, it could be brought to our attention because I think we will monitor the situation.
Yes, sir.
We have people in that district, in that zone, but we watch for love and making sure that everybody is safe.
Yes, sir.
You know, so we wouldn't just like, just let it go and just, you know, just like other cities. Same thing. We will monitor, watch it, make appropriate decisions because we need everybody to go to jail, go to jail.
Okay. I just don't want them to think that they just can have the privilege, and if something happens, there's no consequences.
Oh, no, 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 no. We don't, we don't, we don't play like that.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, anybody else? Madam Chair?
Sure. Look at Howard pointing at me like you know she gonna have comments. You are absolutely correct. I'm gonna have comments. Let me just set the record straight. When it comes to alcohol, it's not that I am disagreeing with what you like to propose. What I am concerned with is, let me ask a question. How many restaurants are interested in participating in this?
So currently, we have all of our downtown restaurants minus, oh, actually, mine is one, who do not participate in the Entertainment District.
And who's that?
That is Blue Rose. And they, they used to, in the beginning, they did, but recently they had management changes, I believe, and so they recently requested within the last month or so to not be included, but they may in the future. But they, they have in the beginning, but now, within the last month, they decided not to.
So did you, did anyone do a survey on the restaurants that wanted to participate from eleven a.m. until eleven-thirty p.m.?
Yes, we currently have all restaurants, minus the Blue Rose, who are currently participating in the entertainment district.
Okay, so open containers from eleven a.m. until eleven-thirty p.m., all restaurants are interested?
Yes, ma'am, and that's the current, that's the current ordinance. We're not making any changes to that.
Yeah, so what are we, what's the difference? Open container, what are we talking about different?
The proposed change?
Yeah, I'm sorry, to our Vice Chair, Public Safety, Chelsea. I see you, Howard, go ahead.
So the current proposal is to remove the actual application process from it. Because that creates more staff work, more opportunities for, I mean, just user error when you have a lot of paper and paper flow going throughout. So that's what we've seen. We've had a couple of instances where we've had members of staff not go and enact entertainment district or let individuals know. So just to make it more clean-cut, when we looked at other cities such as Smyrna, Shambly, Canton, so on and so forth, they don't have an application process or permitting process. It's just a free, open container between certain hours.
So if you're in a restaurant and you want to take alcohol out, you can walk around in that district?
Yes, ma'am. You must have a plastic cup to not exceed sixteen ounces, yes, ma'am.
So the restaurants are gonna measure the sixteen ounces?
Well, they'll just have a standard sixteen-ounce cup.
Ounce cup.
Yes, ma'am, and then that's what they will pour the alcoholic beverage into once they, you know, check the IDs of the individual.
So just, just to state, like with the tributary, the tributary is very contained, okay? When I think about the tributary, it's like your own little city. Like for Halloween, y'all have, it's so cute, you have, where you transport, it's just like a little city, and that's what we talked about initially until, I think, like, two thousand and eight, things changed. Moving forward with the city of Douglasville, I just want to make sure that our council members remember, and if you have a personal, you drink personally, ask yourself the question, what happens after you have X amount of drinks? What is your temperament? What is your attitude? And I say that to say, the binge drinking with young people, you think for not one second that adults will still allow people, young people under the age of twenty-one to drink. So if that is what we're trying to do to increase our downtown, is to increase the alcohol, that's very, that's concerning to me. It is very concerning, and our police officers already have enough on their plate. They're gonna monitor it. That's a lot of monitoring, and we're already going around, going around the rutten bush of how can we pay them more? So it'll probably pass without my vote, but I've seen individuals, even in my own family, that alcohol increased, and after eleven-thirty, you think after eleven-thirty, then it's gonna go further? So I know some of you are saying, I'll be so glad when she leave, trust me.
Uh-uh.
No, I'm just saying about alcohol. I mean, I have, I'm just very, very, very serious. It takes one time, once, and they may, they may say they're gonna walk around in the entertainment district. And Chief Sparks is correct. If they get out of bounty-bounty, you're gonna get arrested. But what does that do really to our downtown? So, I rest my comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Estes, Councilwoman Estes.
I just want to remind everybody that what we are discussing tonight is removing the application process, and the hours of operation of it ultimately have no impact on the quantity that an individual consumes. Because whether they're doing it in the restaurant, or outside, or at home, that's on them. This has no involvement in that and no control over that. We're just alleviating the load on staff who have to deal with the applications for these moving forward, so that...
It's just making it a lot easier to push and increase the use of alcohol.
That's all I have.
Well, I mean, I understand your comment, but like, I sat here behind council, and there are many of us negotiated even having alcohol next to churches. So we compromise that and continue to compromise and compromise. How much further are you gonna continue to compromise? So it's revenue, definitely to the restaurants, but what does it do to our community as a whole? Maybe at some point, but just to do that drastically and not have the application process or just increasing, it just doesn't make sense to me to just keep pushing it like that. So if it passes, it passes. Those are my comments.
Who else?
Want me to give it to Mayor Protem?
Would anybody else like, Councilwoman Davis, do you have any comments on this item?
In my years, Chief, have you ever known anyone to get stopped with a cup, a walker with a, with a drink in there? Have you ever wrote a ticket for somebody outside walking? Now I know one guy sit on the corner every now and then, you have him a butt wizer, but he been sitting there for years. So have you ever?
You know, not right offhand, you know, I had to check all the stats, but we hadn't had any issues.
No, okay, thank you.
We hadn't had any issues since Alfred Theater been open and doing things on the Plaza for years. Really never really had an issue.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I know that when I came on council, it was right after the Arts and Entertainment District had been approved, but it seemed a little daunting, so we decided to, actually, it was kind of decided before I got here, but to kind of step back and just see how it worked out. And everything has, from what I've seen, went really smoothly. But I feel like what this ordinance is doing, it's not so much telling people, hey, bring your coolers and lounge chairs to O'Neill Plaza and come have drinks, but it's saying, get your drink at the restaurant. Have you not finished it yet? You want to walk over here to Forget Me Not and buy a candle? Visit the retail shops that are down here, because what studies have shown is that by opening up this Arts and Entertainment District in this manner, it actually decreases the number of alcohol-related incidents, because instead of sitting there at that booth and continuing to have drinks, you cut it off. You take your little drink, pour it in your pink cup or purple cup, or get your little bracelet or whatever it may be, and then you walk down to the retail shop, or maybe the Douglasville Welcome Center, and get you a Douglasville coffee mug to, you know, commemorate your day in Douglasville with your girlfriends, or whatever it may be. But the listening sessions that I sat in at GMA, and the cities who have already done this, it has actually decreased their alcohol-related incidents, and it has increased their revenue, not just to the restaurants, but to the retail shops in their downtown area, and that's one of the things that we're looking to do. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been around long enough to remember when we've had opposition to every time that we've tried to reform the alcohol laws in this community, and it's usually the, there's always warnings about how things are gonna get worse. I think an example of that was when we passed the extension on Sunday sales, and I remember being part of that debate, and the argument was that was increasing the opportunity for people to drink. The flip side of that that wasn't considered was the fact that if you had no, if you did not have the ability to buy a drink in Douglasville, you're probably gonna go into Atlanta to get a drink. Well, once you get into Atlanta, and if you've had a few too many drinks, you're thinking, wow, that's a fifty-dollar Uber ride back. I'll just, screw it, I'll just get in my car and drive back and take my chances. If you have a few too many at Bobiano's, you're five minutes away from home. It's a ten, it's a ten-dollar Uber ride. I would much rather take my chances with people who are willing to, who realize that they're much closer to home. And in fact, it shows that it was actually safer to introduce Sunday alcohol sales. That being said, I think that we, I think we have to be careful about assuming the worst of our citizenry. We're in a community of adults, and yes, we do have some irresponsible people out there, and we have a fantastic police force that takes care of that for us. The availability of alcohol is not going, is not going to increase irresponsibility. If somebody's irresponsible, they're already irresponsible. I share space with a rehabilitation clinic right now, and I hear the stories of the problems that some people have with alcohol and drugs, and it has nothing to do with availability. If somebody has a problem, they're gonna find a way to satisfy that problem. I think we should treat our, I think we should treat our citizenry as adults, and to Councilwoman Miller's point, if we have opportunities to improve the quality of life by giving them a more adult experience like this, I think that's, I think it's a great opportunity to do that, and it provides an economic benefit to the city at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have one last comment. I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor. You know, in Ward Three, we've always wanted things that we haven't been able to get. And the very first, very large building right down the street is a liquor store. And some council members that sit on this council right now, no, that is not what we But we, but it happened anyway. So when you talk about being responsible and listening to individuals in your community, make sure that you make sure what is the real personal agenda, because that's not what we wanted, but it happened. So when it gets to the point where it becomes personal and you are gaining off of it, it's not right.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I just wanted to commend the council for hearty debate and for everyone to be respected and to vouch your convictions. So thank you so much. I appreciate the diversity and thought and indeed on this council, and how we respect each other and our individual perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just, I just had a couple comments. I guess the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda is to invite the conversation. One thing that I know for me personally and my votes on open container, we've had a number of downtown businesses and other functions, Culture Arts Council, and just different entities that have requested, and I personally have voted for every open container request, those are all events that are contained downtown. The entertainment district that we created, this council, you know, voted for that entertainment district to invite, you know, a variety of things. We want, we want more restaurants, we want more retail, and the decisions that we've been making as a council, from my perspective, since I've been on the council, is, is we've been focusing on downtown. And to Councilwoman Burdanley's point, there are areas within our city limits that have needs, and I would like to think that, you know, I'd be the first one to shout from the rooftop the day that grocery store opens up in her, in her ward, and I, you know, I definitely share her sentiments on the liquor store that opened on that side of town. With all that being said, you know, the reason I've struggled with this particular item is, and I've kind of gone back and forth this weekend, is mainly because, you know, I don't necessarily want to do everything that everybody else is doing around us, but, you know, it is a function of our staff to approve these, these applications, and, you know, I'm not too sure about the hours, and I guess that was one of my questions. I started talking before I asked my question. What are the serving hours right now downtown, weeknights, weekends? Is there, don't we have established serving times?
We do. It's in the ordinance, but, I mean, it doesn't mean that the restaurant has to serve until two a.m. I mean, they can, they can turn it off. Some restaurants close at ten.
But this would only pertain to someone walking around with an alcoholic beverage after eleven-thirty? Or is that, eleven-thirty is a cutoff when they can actually walk out with that alcoholic beverage?
Correct, correct.
Well, anyway, I just, I respect everybody's viewpoint on this, and I've struggled with it a little bit this weekend, but based on the fact that every time we've had an open container request, I've, I've voted to approve it, and so in this case, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to feel hypocritical, so I am going to...
Excuse me, Coach Watts?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment, too? You're right, as far as the discussion, and we voted. I can say that for me, there have been things that I voted for in the past that appear to be presented as one, and then when you, when I've really gone back to really, truly do research and just kind of put puzzle pieces together, if I could go back and change, I would do that. So I'm openly saying that. There are things that is presented, and then once it's presented, sometimes things are done right up under your nose. So if it's been an error on my part, I make that known openly.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Burdanley. I'd like to think that any ordinance law, as it was referred to earlier, that we pass in the city limits at some point in time in the future, if it has ever become an issue that we need to look back at, and we're looking at the charter and some of the things that, you know, that we would revisit anything that we, you know, may pass now. But City Manager, do you have anything to add before I make a motion?
Yeah, no, I was just, I mean, I was just making the statement that you're correct. At any given time, you can repeal the ordinance. The other is just to add to you all's, as Ms. Jordan mentioned, or I should say, Ms. Jackson mentioned, this is to allow for, to remove the application process. At any given time, any restaurant can choose to participate or not to participate, and I would think that in some instances, some of the restaurants, if it's the non-event day, they probably will not participate. But it will be their choice.
Right, and that's been my understanding, that there might be a couple restaurants that won't participate.
It will be their choice.
And I know that these types of ordinances are kind of building for what we foresee in the future, and what we see in the future are more restaurants that will be able to sell alcoholic beverages, you know, or beer pubs, or whatever it is on the horizon that may be coming our way, and so. And I was just in Huntsville representing the city council to look at the way they're doing things, and it was mentioned the other night, the purple cups, and, you know, personally, as I walked around, I was running one night downtown, I did a lot of hiking downtown with groups, and I never saw an issue. They had that ordinance in place. I do like that idea. I know that there's a cost involved, but I, I thought, before I knew this was gonna be on the agenda, when I was in Huntsville, I thought if this ever were to occur in Douglasville, this would be an ideal thing. In other words, everybody knows if you... In other words, everybody knows if you're walking around with a, now, I, I don't, I personally don't drink, and so when I got my purple, purple cup with ginger ale in it, I thought, I asked, I asked, you got any clear cups back there? Just so, you know, I didn't, but I didn't want somebody to say, hey, I saw Chris Watts the other day, you know, drinking downtown Huntsville. But anyway, I say all that jokingly to say that I, I thought that was a good system in place for Huntsville. I don't know where this ordinance will lead if it were to pass, but, you know, maybe at some point, we would look at everybody that's participating, somebody walk, now we're saying clear cups, but I, I can go home and go to Walmart and get me a whole stack of clear cups and then go to my car and fill it up, you know.
I like red or purple, I like a color.
Yep. But anyway, okay, does anybody else have any comments before I make a motion? All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-five dash three-two-five.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a motion to approve item twenty-five dash three-twenty-five. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller, in. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash three-twenty-five with lots of discussion. Do we have any more concerns, comments, issues, any more deliberation? I'm not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Yes.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Twenty-five dash three-twenty-five is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have tonight under public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll move on. Vice Chair, you have Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No Ivans tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Burdanley.
You're welcome.
Any other business to come before council tonight from the council elected officials? No, I don't see any. Then we'll move on to updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Attorney Jordan. Our chief of police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What, you don't have no car show or nothing this weekend?
We chilling this week.
What, I can't believe it. Thank you, Chief.
We got a class going on the night that I'm, when I leave here. We have a foundational transformation of life.
Okay.
Class that we do every Monday night.
Very good. When is midnight basketball?
Well, I gotta get with Chris.
I might have to turn out there and play a little something. I gotta shoot from the five.
Chief, don't you have a town hall tomorrow night? I got it written on my calendar, I have it written wrong.
You may not, I got somewhere going on, I have to look, I think we...
We have a town hall? Let me see if it's on my calendar.
Because we coming up on the, our end of the year report, and we coming up on the holiday season. So usually, we have a holiday season, town hall meeting, so we can advise the citizens on how to prepare for this holiday season, as, as they go out and going to buy Christmas items and traveling back and forth, how to stay protected, so, yeah, so we...
That's coming up.
You do have a town hall tomorrow?
Yes, let me, let me...
I don't have it on my calendar. Is it City Manager?
It's right.
Is the town hall tomorrow for the Police Department?
I am not certain, Madam Mayor.
I don't have it.
It's on the website calendar.
Okay.
From the Police Department.
All right. If it's on the calendar, it's there.
It's the town hall then. What time is it?
That's all right.
What time is it, Coach?
Probably seven.
I have it down for six-thirty.
Six-thirty to seven o'clock.
Yeah, and people can go online, because I've gone online before to listen to it, and like you're saying, you tell us all about that.
One thing, and I won't be going, one thing we thinking about doing is doing, trying to do some more part, podcasting.
Mm-hmm.
To summer cast, because some people don't come.
Yes, sir.
And then we could do exactly what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we can get it out to more people.
Yes, sir. All right, well, we have a town hall tomorrow at six-thirty. Thank you, Dr. Sparks. Our City Manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Just to remind you all, we do have executive session, so, yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, comments from citizens and delegates, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business germane to the City of Douglasville. No takers?
Hang on.
What? Okay, we don't have any takers. I will open the floor for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a brief recess.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty-five dash four-fifty-one to adjourn to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a brief recess. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are in executive session, adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matter after a brief recess. Take a recess and come back.